All right, welcome everyone to the Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole Meeting, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I can see the municipal chair and representative for District Five, Councilwoman Turner from District Four is here, Councilwoman Omias, District Three, Councilwoman Potter, District Two, and Councilman Rogers, District One, as well as Jennifer Kennedy and Patty are here as well in the council office. We are going to begin, we have no approval of minutes, as we just met last week, so we will move forward from that. These back-to-back meetings, I can't imagine how much fun it is for you all together.
Yeah, amazing.
So with that, we are going to begin with our discussion items. So the first thing, and maybe I would like a little quick one-minute racket in the council. There's a lot going on in power, whether it's power rate increases. They're going to be going through a lot from a, from a capital projects, you know, just different things that are going on in power. I was considering putting them on every other committee of the whole, even if it's for a very short period of time, to give us an update. You know, what's changing, what are the couple high points that are changing in power? Do you have any concerns? Do you need any more support? You know, where are you at from, you're going to hear something today about some of the capital stuff that they're going to need. Is that something, I just feel like it's a big deal to our residents, especially with the revenues we've done, then maybe it's good that we're a little more informed frequently from them. Is that something you all would be interested in?
We used to do that, once a quarter, Greg, we used to do monthly reports.
Um.
And it's been a couple of years.
Not in the council, but I mean, we.
No, in the committee of the whole.
I think we're quarterly, quarterly.
Quarterly.
I thought we did a monthly. I mean, it's been a few days.
Are you guys comfortable starting monthly and see if it's too much? Then we can always scale it back and go quarterly, or do you want to?
I'd rather hear what Greg has to say about that.
Oh, I'm, I'm good. I can give you as much information, if you, I could even, if you wanted to keep it however you want to work it out. But I could give you a highlight every month that would, nice little succinct executive summary of things that are going on. We could do that, and then, um, I'm getting tired of me, but uh.
Never.
No, but I, I, I will, I'm, I'm good doing whatever you do.
And I think about intuit, one, obviously, power you need to our city, in the sense that we have our own power.
We are, but functioning as the board.
Right, and so I see us having, what I see us having is more, just more information and that sort of thing. So is it so comfortable with that? We'll start with it once a month and just see, go from there.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. With that, um, Power Department report, Mr. Greg Bellon presenting.
Thank you, um, it's good to be with you, um, thanks for having me, Power Department here today. So, uh, I was gonna, I'll go over a few things. So I think last time someone asked, do you have a PowerPoint for us? So resolve it.
Oh, yay.
I mean, it's great that we have it, but it helps.
It sure does, oh, I agree, I agree. So, um, a few things, I'm going to inundate you with acronyms today. That's kidding. Uh, resources, we're looking along from our looking at projects that we're dealing with. Um, so just right off the get-go, um, so UAMPS, I'll just, I'm like, this is the one I want to talk about today. So, uh, U A M P S, UAMPS. Now I'll just kind of read it off there and then we'll talk about it. But it's the Utah Minnesota, Utah Associated Municipal Power Systems, UAMPS. So it's a full-service inter-local agency, provides comprehensive wholesale electric energy services, operates on a non-profit basis, and it's the community-owned power systems throughout the Intermountain West. And so the UAMPS membership represents fifty members from Utah, Arizona, California, Idaho, Nevada, New Mexico, and Wyoming. So UAMPS is kind of our local, and then there's APPA, which is American Public Power Association, which is national. And that's public power on a national level.
So many UAMPS blow up under APPA, not necessarily UAMPS, I understand.
Sure, yep. And then there's a UMPA, which is a whole other inter-local people that in Utah County. But so UAMPS is one you'll always want to remember, and I know, uh, Councilman Rogers, it's fairly new and we've got. So I'll just come every so often, we'll just talk. There's a ton, I mean, I could fill out three sheets of acronyms, we won't do that to you.
I appreciate the, the explanation.
We can always give you a list.
Yeah, we could create a good list, we could for sure. But, uh, UAMPS is, uh, I meet with them monthly, and, um, they, they help us a lot. They, we're looking at different projects, um, they help build our power to us, they help get the power that we purchase wherever and get it delivered to Murray. And so it's, they're a very, they're a big asset to us, so. And, uh, they're local, and, uh, they do a really good job, so. Um, so let's just kind of look, look in our resources. We've got CRSP, that's another one, Colorado River, sorry, I told you I wouldn't put another one in front of you, but CRSP, that's Colorado River Storage Project. Uh, that's anything from, uh, let's see, Flaming Gorge down to Glen Canyon Dam. Uh, we have, we got thirteen and a half megawatts of nice renewable clean, uh, electric energy from them, hydro. So, uh, Hunter Power Plant, um, we have twenty-two megawatts in that, and that's coal-fired over in Price, Price area. We have land, two landfill gas plants, um, Salt Lake County and Transjordan. Between the two of them, we get seven and a half megawatts. We actually are right now selling part of, part of our Transjordan back to, or sorry, selling it to Trucky Donner. And, uh, they're using it to meet their RFP, or their renewable portfolio.
How many do we sell, tell them again?
Seventy percent, but, uh.
Seventy percent of the seven and a half, or?
Uh, just, uh, so that one's four and a half, so seventy percent of that, so roughly hundred-three megawatts. That, oh, maybe I'll bring it up right now, we're talking about that. Um, that is getting renewed, and we've, I've had some council talk to me and say, hey, why don't we bring that back into Murray? So I met with them, and we're going to give them, we're going to extend one year. Let them try and figure out how they're going to replace that on their end. They are very appreciative with that, but after one year, um, we'll bring it back, and a hundred percent will be back in Murray. So I, I hope that's, I hope that works well with you guys, because that's the direction we're going right now, so.
Would we have a loss from that, if we did that?
Um, I mean, well, back when we started this, it was one of our most expensive resources. It's in the mix now, so, um, it makes sense to bring it back.
Okay.
It's really interesting to go and see that as well.
Yeah, I'd love it if you guys wanted to tour that again.
How many of you have seen it?
I don't think we've ever had a tour, at least not in my opinion.
Hey, we got, we got a few things we need to set up. Love to get to it, it's, it's really fun to see. It's quite a project, and we're the only utility in Utah that has methane gas right now. We were, we were told one time methane's not sexy, but that's okay.
It's crazy.
We're, we're looking at resources.
So let me just make sure, is the seven and a half megawatts is what we have available? And we ship seventy percent of four and a half megawatts off?
Yeah.
So we, it's not going to increase above seven and a half, seven and a half is like, that's the one.
We'll get seven and a half back.
Okay.
And, and it's just, it's just nice, it's a good renewable resource for us, and it's, it's reliable. And it's twenty-four-seven, and we, we really like that. Uh, we've got Red Mesa, which is just like four point eight megawatts of solar that's, uh, just brought on in March. Uh, WRP is some hydropower that we, we can, we can get, it's probably replacement power, but initially it used to be if they had excess power, we'd get it, but they are actually just going out onto the market now. So it's kind of a hit or miss as to whether it's less expensive or more expensive than anything else we can get. So we kind of look at that every month. Uh, natural gas turbines, we have about, we can generate thirty-three megawatts right in our backyard, which is nice. We use that in a peak, so that's our peaking. We use thirty-three megawatts usually in the summertime to help fill our load. And, uh, and then IPP, we have actually seventy-two megawatts that we could call back at any, on a seasonal basis. Right now, we're calling back nineteen megawatts of IPP, that's going to end, we brought that back late summer. So that, um, that helps a lot, and then we are not calling it back for the winter. We're, we've got other things we've got lined up for the winter. Anyway, so it's just kind of a snapshot of our resources.
The terrains are also interesting to see if, and I would think, I would think most people, most of the council have seen them. So I'd be kind of cool.
We're going to go on a field trip.
Any of us, but.
We'll just, we'll load you up in a van and just take you on.
It's really cool.
One day, or, uh, we can take you down to IPPs and, but I mean, I think it'd be nice to see what we have locally first. Take you up to the hydro, the generators, uh, see some of our substations. So when I talk about central substation, when I'm talking, I'm going to talk about the riding substation. Pam knows what that is, but that's right in her backyard. But, um, anyway, so yeah, I think the more, the more you guys know, the better off we are, so.
So the hydro's not on this list?
Uh, no, I left that off, sorry.
No, you're fine. How much is that megawatts?
So, so Salt Lake County is three megawatts, Transjordan is four and a half. So it's seven and a half total.
Or the hydro?
Oh, wait, which one did?
Hydro is five.
Oh, I, no, the hy, I just, I heard something and thought something else. The hydro is a five megawatt, we have two, two and a half megawatt.
We've stopped.
Yeah, we had one unit running this year.
When's the last time it was working?
Well, we've had some issues, uh, well, it worked this year, half of it, half of it. Before that, probably three years before that, we had the failure, then we had the problem with the, yeah. We just had some problems up there, we're trying to get it back to where it's an awesome resource. Quite lots of ice cream to handle. Rewire that this off-season and be able to hopefully have both. And handstock is still something we're looking at, so we're going to address that during winter, during this off-season as well, so. Lots, there's lots of, lots of stuff going on. So here's a long-term outlook. Um, so if you look at that, I'm trying to explain it, so it's, it's, if you kind of look at the legend up top, so CRSP, that's, that's about the thirteen megawatts that we were talking about, so that, we're, that, these are our base loads. Uh, WRP is something we can put in there as a base load, but it's not technically a base load, but it can be. So Hunter is the gray. If you look at Hunter, um, it was scheduled to come offline in twenty thirty. I've heard that's being moved up, and I, we're not exactly sure the timeframe. I mean, around twenty twenty-five, I hope it's not that soon. The thing about Hunter is, it's, the more it is, you know, they're, we're, it's one of our least expensive resources, so it's, and it's, so we'll, we'll take that as long as we can get it. But, so we're looking at a twenty-two megawatt deficit in twenty thirty unless they move it up. Um, then we've got, um, hydro, so that's, and that's seasonal load, so that's, but that is a summer resource. This is a summer one, I have the same thing for a winter, but I didn't want to throw too much at you. Um, and then if you can see, Red Mesa came on in twenty twenty-three, and that's about four point, four point eight megawatts that we get from solar, and so that's, uh, that's during the day, obviously, but that is one of the lower resources that we count. So, so we've got to come up with twenty-two megawatts, and we're out looking, trying to figure out what would, IPP is.
Yes.
So.
Can we, um, purchase more from Red Mesa?
Uh, we took our full allotment that we could have, as fully subscribed, and now if they do Red Mesa two, you bet we'll be on the list. And, uh.
Is that shared?
And we are looking at some other, UAMPS is looking at a few other solar installations as well, so.
Good.
Uh, we're, we're definitely exploring.
Are we looking at any solar?
What's that?
Are we looking at any solar, like within the city, on the buildings?
That's something that's not right now, I mean, it's something we definitely, you know, definitely to look at probably, because that's, although we take, we do count the rooftop solar, we don't really put in our portfolio, but there's, I'm trying to think, I'm going to pull this out as far as rooftop solar. That's, I wish Matt was here, he'd have that, he'd have that on the top of his head, but, uh, that's really, uh, I will, yeah, I could find out real quick. But, uh, um, but right now, it, it makes more sense for us to go out and purchase something that we can bring in and, um, bring into our resource that is a little more controlled, I guess, but that's not, that's not off the books either.
Yeah, well, there's the upfront, there's like that front cost.
Yeah.
And the light blue is showing the deficit that we have.
Yeah, thank you, yes, and so we drop off. Um, and another, another thing we're looking at, um, we started looking at this again in, at UAMPS is the CFPPs, there's another one, carbon-free power project, that's nuclear. Um, I'm not going to bring that back anytime soon. Um, I don't think the subscription's there yet, and cost still.
How many is it, how many would it cover though, on the?
Uh, well, we, I mean, we could sign up for, they'd love to take as much as we want. We can take the full twenty-two megawatts if we wanted to replace, and that's about the timeframe they're looking at coming online, twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one. But they've got a lot of work to do.
So that would about replace Hunter?
Uh, we could, yeah, I mean, that's an option, for sure, that is an option. But, uh, the thing is, it's scheduled for twelve units, they've had to reduce the size down to six units. And so the cost of that plant is now being spread across six units, whereas if they could get the subscription up to twelve, then that would reduce the cost. I hope they can get there, I, I think it, I think in the long term, we have to have nuclear, because it is carbon-free. We do have to have it in our portfolio eventually. Um, I'm not going to bring it forward anytime soon, because I'm just not there. But we are in the project, or, no, sorry, not in the project, we get to attend the meetings and be informed so that we can make a good informed decision, but, um, there's lots of work to do. Might as well viable, viable option, and I am.
Yes, alright.
So with the light blue, I mean, that means we're.
How much I want to say, but I'm all with that.
I know, I, I know, I know.
With the light blue, that means we're going out to the market for that shingle.
Yep, yeah.
And then we're probably giving Hammer great advice in the market, or?
We can, I mean, that's, so, but once again, I don't have, I don't have time to talk about that. But I will, I will, so what happens is we can only firm up, we can only firm up so much. So if you look at our low load, so we're probably, we're trying to firm up what our low-load hours are, our max low-load hours. So let's say it's sixty megawatts. We, we drop from a hundred and twenty down to sixty megawatts, or maybe it's a little more than that, but we can't firm up any more than what our minimum is we take, because if we're long, then we have to, we're taking something out and then we're selling it at this amount, so that's not, that doesn't make any.
So you always want to have light blue?
Yeah, we always want to have some that we're going to the market for, but not, so, so this is, if we put our, we don't have our turbines on there, so in the summertime, if we had to, we could bring thirty-three megawatts up into that with turbines. So we have, we have ways to fill that in, and we do the very best we can to mitigate that and, you know, keep our risk to a minimum. But, uh, yeah, we are exposed to the market.
Are the turbines expensive to?
Uh, it depends, so, once again, whatever, whatever, yes, thank you, whatever the gas costs is what dictates how much it's going to cost. So right now, we have gas in October, and we can generate for about fifty-five dollars megawatt hour, which is awesome, but we can buy it right now for thirty. So I, it's, but I, we could go on all night, sorry, and I, I think I only have, I think I only have twenty minutes here.
But I think this will see more.
Yes.
It's good that, I mean, for me, it's good that like we're understanding, we're having this continuous conversation, because I feel like I've, I'm to a point of understanding with UAMPS really, yeah.
I mean, I love the fact that Gary knew the blue was, you know, a deficit. Someone just coming off, someone sitting back here right now that hasn't seen this before, what is that? No, I appreciate it, you guys are, you guys are getting it.
The market, like the statistics.
Yeah, so here's our project, central substation, AMI meters, LED streetlights, and hydro. These are just some of the big projects that we've got on the book. The one I want you to know about is our central substation, and, um, we had Pam and Gary out there the other day, and we actually walked into the substation, we showed where a transformer's leaning this way and a transformer's leaning this way. So it's on, it's built on a landfill, and it's, needs to be rebuilt.
I mean, it's collapsing more or less is what, the only way I can think of, the ground under it is collapsing.
Just think of thousands and thousands of pounds on a cement pad and it's starting to tilt.
So what has it do about?
So we, one option we looked at so far in bringing up, we've had some, uh, had some drilling, so we've had, uh, yeah, I can't remember what that's called, but they've come in and drilled, and so they can look at the geology and tell us where the best soil is. Well, guess what, the best soil is right where our warehouse building is. So one option we're looking at is actually possibly moving it up and tearing down the warehouse building and building substation up there. That's one option. We're going to look at also if we can do it in place, if we can shore it up and make it a viable in-place. I looked at, we looked at it the other day, but that's, that's our next thing we're going to look at. But just know that we're going to probably have two substations, or sorry, two transformers being ordered. I'm hoping by mid-October, hooking an RFP out, and we'll get the transformers coming, and then we'll try and figure out where they're going to go.
And how much in a second?
Uh, transformers are upwards of two million, that's going to be a four million dollar, just that. Substation itself, I don't, I want, I don't want to tell you that right off the, off the top, it's, it's, it's more than that, I'm quite in. So, but that's, right now, that keeps me up at night, that substation.
When you see it, I mean, it is a warming of it.
It is, even the gentleman that I was with, he even said, this keeps me up all night long, because I just don't know what's going to happen.
Well, we're hoping in two years, we'll have a new substation built.
Could we, I mean, could we capitalize that we're already going to be building on Third West as well? For our, our new area that we're about to build for.
Is that for public works?
It's public works, yeah, it's Fifth West, sorry.
I got, he's got, I have no rubs, and there is no.
Yeah.
It's a tower, tower, we don't miss. Power and water and.
Only on a shirt.
I hear you. No, he, they would take us if, I know they'd make room for us, but we're hoping, we'll see.
To use this space.
We have, we have a lot. Is it ideal? No, that's not the best. I mean, between railroad tracks is not ideal to me, but, I mean, it's property that we have. There's other places we can look at, I looked at some in the past, and it never came to fruition, which is okay, that's fine. But, uh, just know that we will, we'll, we'll do the very best we can, come up with the best options, and we'll bring something forward to you.
At the safest.
Yeah, for sure. Um, okay, I'm going to go up to.
Thank you, um, actually, we're at time, so is there anything else you wanted to hit on before, when we'll see in a couple meetings, so?
I have one more item.
Oh, you do have one more item, so do you just want to move to that and take, okay, yeah. So the second item is discussion on coordinates, I mean, fifteen dot two zero dot two thirty of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to electric service schedule, fifteen voltage discounts for general service ultra-large customers.
Okay, so let me just tell you what happened in this process, I mean, when you're doing something like this, there's lots to look at. Um, somehow, and I, I don't, I'm not, I don't know what, it just got left off. It wasn't, it didn't get stricken, it didn't get taken out, it just got left off of a page, and so, in the rate. And so it's something that we need to keep, uh, Dave Berg, or he, you know, he, our consultant, looked at it, and it was supposed to be in the rate. So it was just a, it's something that happened, so, but, and what it is, is, so it's a voltage discount, so they take a, um, they take a primary metering installation, so they, they take it on the primary side, and so they own everything past their connection, so transformers, uh, wire, all that stuff is there, and so we don't have to, we don't have to worry about that. So it's just kind of, that's, and it was into, it was built into their rate, they have a voltage discount to give them a break for us not having to upkeep transformers and all that kind of stuff. Um, it's, it's, it's our, it's a, there's like one customer on this rate, and, um, their bill is sizable, so, but as far as this discount goes, it's, it's a very, very, very small percentage of their bill.
And so when you say large, ultra-large customers, is that like the hospital and, uh?
Also large hospital. So they, they are, they are, they are ultra-large, yeah. So, yeah, just one on that rate, and that, that's seven megawatt.
And this is something they've had previously, and let's just hear it.
Yeah, so, um, and so we're just glad you be aware of it tonight, and we'll come back at the next council meeting and get the, get the council and have you vote on that. But, uh, I mean, it's, it's just something that you've got, yes, it's out there. So I'll take this, I'll, but, uh, it's, it's, it's not a, but we just want it back on there. So if we can amend that, and I think people thought we were trying to do rate increases, but no, it's not, it's not, it's not anything different than what it was, so it's just, uh, and, uh.
We are human.
As I said, we have ten more minutes still then, considering if I put your two times together, so is there any questions on this? Or any other questions on the general power stuff that we were discussing earlier? The only thing that I would be interested, when you went to the resource, um, and you showed what resources you have available, can you also just right next to it show what, what, what we're using kilowatt at each one? I know you did in the chart, but the chart is not in numbers, and so that would be helpful for me.
Okay, so if you could just see.
Yeah, the megawatts you're pulling from each one of those projects and actually using. Because that kind of shows how much we have available to us.
Yeah, so it's kind of not, not the greatest on the side, but so you can, you can have to guess, you can have to guess.
It would be helpful just to see the numbers, I think.
Yeah, I think that's excellent, I think, I really like that, um, so that, if we could somehow incorporate that.
So it's kind of like the first column, what's available, the second column is what we actually consume.
Yeah, okay.
And add hydro, right?
Yeah, and add hydro to it.
Yeah, for sure, so. Okay, well, appreciate it, appreciate it, thanks for your support.
Appreciate you.
Oh, wait.
Don't worry, we can take that one minute, but you go grab your phone. You're okay? Okay, we'll move on to number three, a discussion on the library senior center feasibility study. And we have Kim Fang and Jeff Davis both presenting, so I will invite you both to the front. And anyone else that you want to bring up with you or recognize, we're welcome to. Thank you, Greg, appreciate you.
Thank you, guys.
So you could just, can you plug it in here?
It's over on the side.
Well, he's not, he doesn't have the USB, he's going to plug his laptop in.
Well, don't ask me, because, you know, I can't get my printer. It's like, you know, I need my IT guy.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, excited to hear on this project, or?
So, um, this is Jeff Davis, who, uh, was the lead on this project. He's from MSR Design, and a, a, an architecture firm that works a lot with libraries, and he does have experience with both, uh, with a couple of facilities that are the combination, library senior center as well for a couple of different places. So I'm going to just turn the time over to Pam, and she can kind of go over with you the, what's, what they found in their study.
Okay, we'll just wait until this gets loaded up, I don't know when, so.
Cameron, you want to?
You help us get it working?
He can see.
Oh. It's like getting dumbfounded.
Him, while he's going, he's speech on line, I have a few questions, so shall we wait until he? Let's ask all the citizens, Jeff, would you be surprised if I don't be watching us? Things like so. Because I don't want to, I don't want to distract you, train the thought.
I'm in the front, if you can hear us, we're just working on getting the presentation.
It's like, I sent out the light. Not good.
No. Doing something.
It's just sick.
Oh, yeah, he's watching himself.
I'm sure we're ahead right now, so we're okay. We're ahead by five minutes, so.
Team is the experts, so. Do we have a flash drive that we can move it over to that sort of? Yeah, I don't have a flash drive with me. If somebody does, we could do that. When I hear the flash drive.
Yeah, Brenda has a flash.
Who does? Yeah. Just has a dongle.
He just has one.
Dongle that we need.
Like Owen, he just do.
He's like, he's a magician. Just so you know that it's connected. Oh, you have dongle.
Yeah, that's right on him.
I didn't mean to connect. Maybe for that device. Like this bag.
We got it, Brad.
I think we got it.
Thanks, Brad. Appreciate you.
I will test the mic.
A new project.
Sure. I have watched.
They spring it in.
Yeah.
Well, also, we have, you already come here and talked to us, we'll need to test the cellphone, so she blew me away when she pulled the cellphone out and just looks up and.
This is more powerful than that, to be honest. So, I'm not sure why.
Right now. That was my first experience with a presentation, though, with a cellphone. And it was, like, it looked exactly like it was. Again, everyone knows those online and stuff, we are doing a discussion on the library senior center feasibility spend, so, thirty minutes.
Okay, I will, uh, just go along and feel free to interrupt me with questions as we go. Um, of course, you have the, the full report. Um, uh, there is just a. Hope you understand, there's, there's two kind of documents. There's the report itself, and then there's an appendix, which is a series of the. Meetings, uh, presentations from the process that we went through. So, this study was really about looking at the feasibility of the library and the senior recreation center, and how they might come together in, on one site. But also to look at how they might be able to share spaces, which would make for a more efficient building, and make for, um, uh, uh, a less expensive building because of the, the shared space. And not just shared space for, um, like, uh, uh, toilet rooms and staff areas, but also shared space for. Community event type space that they could both use just based on scheduling. I think you're familiar with the site where the senior recreation center is. That's the site that we were studying, is to look at if we could get both the library and the senior recreation center on both of those. Um, we started out in looking at kind of the overall site and the parking. Um, parking has become kind of the, one of the main issues of whether this can work or not. And I've got a little bit more, uh, uh, on that, but including this lot out to the west that's showing, you know, ninety-four stalls in this, uh, study. That's a ways away from the site where the senior recreation center currently is, but including that one, it's two hundred and forty-one existing parking stalls.
The one seventeen's that big lot right across the street.
Yeah, so that's, that's the lot that is, it's basically the senior recreation center parking. It also gets used for the ball fields, and then it's also. The upper half of that is where the, uh, underground water reservoir is, and the pump house is just off to the right of that. So, we started out by looking at, um, uh, the program needed, and not just the program needed based on what is going on now, but looking out into the future. And to say, what is the space the library needs? What is the space the senior recreation center needs? Um, we looked at, um, national benchmarking of similar sized cities, similar sized programs, uh, kind of across the nation, and, um. And then, and developed a program. Part of developing that program was looking at the, um, the library and the senior recreation center at different times of. Uh, uh, the day and what their use was and what their kind of, uh, membership, um, onsite was, so that we could start to see. Where is the peak use hours? And if they offset each other, that helps us understand where we can see those overlapping and sharing spa, shared spaces. Um, as we started to look at this and look at the kind of unique needs of the library and the senior recreation center. Um, uh, the consensus was that it would make sense to have a shared entry, um, instead of having two different entries. Um, uh, even though there wants to be, you know, their own identities, there is some crossover use, right? A lot of the seniors do use a library and making them kinda go back outside, especially in the winter. To get over to the library did make a lot of sense, and we can make, uh, a great building with a, a, a single presence entry. Then after you enter in that lobby, then you have your, um, identity and entry to the library to one side, the senior to the other side, and then. Um, taking the shared space and putting it in between, so that some of those shared spaces would be accessible through the lobby, like probably a big multipurpose room. But then, um, the seniors could a, access some of those from their spaces, library could access it from their spaces, without there needing to be an overlap of. Uh, mixing of the different, uh, groups. And then we loo, looked at, um, this would need to be a two-story building, um, and so we looked at what kind of shared spaces might go up above, and then. Um, we, we looked at keeping the senior center on the ground level, just for better accessibility, and then, um, putting some more of the library up on the second level. Um, so you'll also see in, in your document, the program that we put together, that has the, um, required square footages based on. Um, our recommendations, um, along with some notes, uh, a, about some of those that include things about, um. Furnishings or any special requirements, so that, uh, should this project move forward, um, that's available for, uh, a really good starting point. So here is the, um, uh, the two different options that we came to, and you can see in the appendix, there were lots of different options that we explored. These were the two most feasible. So site option one looks at, uh, demolishing the senior recreation center and building a new. Um, uh, library and senior recreation center at that same location. Um, this scheme ends up with a little bit less parking, um, and the other issue, um, that is. Uh, uh, a part of this one is that the senior recreation center would need to find an alternative location. Or, you know, eighteen to twenty-four months while this building was getting built. Um, um, which, in our cost estimating that we'll get to in a minute, it does have some kind of. Pre, preliminary costs associated with that, but it's more about kind of some moving costs. It's not, be, because we don't have an exact solution, it doesn't include. If you had to lease space, it doesn't include, um, if you had to renovate space, um, in, in order to, uh, relocate them. Option two does have more parking, and it also has, um, um, the great, uh, um. Opportunity to build the building while the senior recreation center stays in its current location. After the construction is complete, they can move into the new building, then that building can be demolished, and then the parking lot can be built, um, at its location. Uh, the one thing that this does displace is there's a little bit of a, there's a pavilion and a playground. Um, this option displaces that. Um, and, um, whether that moved to a different site, um, or, um, just, um, wasn't there anymore, you lose that in this option.
Could we also build a new pavilion and playground? It's the option two.
Yes, you could. Um, you would sacrifice either parking, or one option that was talked about, um, was the, um, old library and fire station building. Where the head start is, is city property.
Uh, in front of it.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, uh, up and to the left, just off of the screen, to the left of those houses up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sixty-two.
But it does connect into the park.
Backside of the park.
Yeah, in fact, if I just.
No, it's right on sixty-two.
I can show you.
Oh, yeah, that green, yeah.
Yeah, it's right on sixty-two.
Yep, it's that building.
It's like.
Upper left-hand corner.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, that is city property, it is being leased. Um, that could be a place where things could be relocated to, depending on what the decision is to do with that property.
Sounds like a domino effect.
Well, these prizes are.
You move one, you have to move the other, then move the other, and then move the back.
Yep. So, um, I'll just draw your attention, I won't go through in detail, but let me know if you have any questions. Um, this, this page shows you, um, some of the, you know, opportunities and challenges. Um, of, of the, the, the different options. You see that parking on option one is a red, right? On option two, it's the kind of orange. Um, which is kind of in between. It, there is some feasibility, more with option two with the parking, but, um. Uh, not, not a completely ideal situation. And so let me kind of walk you through the parking, so. Um, everything we've shown you so far shows that the project is feasible as a two-story building with shared, um, uh, program. Um, and, and then it comes down to parking. So, uh, these are, um, di, different pieces out of, um, out of the. Report. I just wanted to pull you, bring your attention to that last line where it says. Um, minimum parking stall count to make the project feasible is two hundred and forty-nine parking stalls. So, that really is a minimum. It's still, um, uh, that'll provide adequate parking for most times, but during. High use, um, baseball, it probably is going to be super crowded and not, not enough. Uh, but that's kind of a minimum point. So then, when we look through our parking study, and you'll notice there are two columns, and I'll, I'll just pull your. Attention to the one on the right. There are two columns. One excludes those ninety-plus stalls that are far away, and one includes those. So, it becomes more feasible if you say it's okay to have constituents walk a little bit further to get to the library or the senior recreation center. Not ideal for seniors, not ideal for moms and lots of kids and strollers dragging them along, right? For some people, it may be, so that's something to weigh. If you wanna include those, it does make it more feasible. Our recommendations are based on excluding those, um, and so these are all of the options that. Um, provide parking that excludes those ninety-one, that is above that two hundred and forty-nine count. So let me help you understand, um, those just a little bit better as well.
I, I have a question. Um. In my district, we have a problem with, um, events happening on, uh, baseball field, softball field, whatever you wanna call it. And neighbors can't get out, and if an emergency vehicle has to get in there, they have to stop at the top of Seventh West and walk in their equipment. So, I, I, I don't want, I don't, I, the word want is shouldn't be in there, but I have, I, I have to be very careful of those citizens. That they're going to be parking into their street and making it a congestion.
Yep.
So, that's, I, that's what I have a worry for, because we have that situation right now in my neighborhood. And the parking is very, very congested, so I just, I'm, this parking issue has.
Yes, and it, it, it is a big challenge, and that's why we said that two hundred and forty-nine is a minimum.
Yeah.
For the most part, that's gonna work well, but if you're, if you're having, um, uh, playoffs or some kind of.
Yes, that's.
Tournament, right?
And then, and Councilwoman Turner was just at the rec center, and she said there was like a hundred and how many people?
Sixty.
Yeah, so if you've got that going on and a baseball going on, and you've got the library going on. That's a lot of impact for that community in that area to handle that amount of. Pressure of parking and people coming in and using that.
Yep.
I mean, I don't have any issue of the building, what it looks like, I think it's great. My biggest issue is the parking and with the neighbors and. Everything just coming all at once, so.
And, and that's why we did a lot of detailed study on the parking, because we could see that it was going to be a pinch point. And so, um, so you'll notice on this chart, the two bottom ones that I had highlighting yellow, they have more than two hundred and forty-nine stalls. But I've graded them out now. It's option E and option M.
Okay.
Um, those are the underground parking options, right? And you could easily increase that to even more stalls by going underground. The reason we're saying that it's not really super feasible has to do with the cost.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
It's, if you can get the parking there, but it's gonna be at a very high cost.
Yeah.
It's also not a very efficient, um, so like if you think about a developer putting a parking structure in, or even putting a parking structure under their building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those are designed to be super efficient for the cost versus the number of parking stalls. The shapes and available land, right, including pushing up against that water reservoir. It doesn't make it very efficient and incurs a little few extra costs, so the costs are quite expensive for the underground parking.
About a structured parking.
So we did look at structured parking, um, and so, uh, the structured parking ones that we are showing are, um, C. Oh, it's actually C and E. And, 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 and they, and they have a little bit less, uh, cost if I remember correctly, but still, but still some expense. So, so it's what it comes down to is there is an option that works, um, and that's the yellow one. Um, and that's two hundred and seventy-four stalls, and is what that one includes is it's basically just that option two. Um, but then, i- if you look at the upper left-hand diagram where it shows B, there's a piece of property there that, uh, some folks at the city, I think it was, uh. Corey with the seniors in it, um, uh, had talked to them, and they would be willing to look at potentially selling that piece of property. Um, and if you purchase that, that would get you up to that two hundred and seventy-four stalls. Now, these two in green work even better. Um, but there's a, I think, quite a bit of a controversy over this, and, and, um, it, it was recommended. Um, uh, through Parks and Recreation that this would not be an option, um, but that would be to take out one of the four ball fields, right? And so, that, that is a, uh.
An option.
It, it, it's what makes this project feasible. It doesn't mean that it's feasible for the city, given what all of your priorities are. So, from our perspective as consultants, we take that into consideration and say, um, from what we've been told, it's really not feasible, but. Um, knowing that this project may happen, you know, sometimes those types of things change. If there was another ballpark built, if, right, there's a variety of things that could change in. In, in the future.
You'll be less players if you take it out.
I don't, I mean, personally, I don't like that option if we're having a conversation about Kim Price. I don't, I mean, personally, I don't like that option if we're having a conversation about Kim Price. Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
So there's, so that's why it's really this yellow one that I've highlighted, that becomes the, kind of the only feasible option. Um, that, that fits within that, and, and it is, it is above that, and then you can also, if, if you do count, when you think about ball bill use. If you do count that ninety stall, ninety-one stalls, it then gets you up to three hundred and sixty-five. Right, so, so, um, there are options about trying to control where people are parking, say, library and senior recreation only here. But then things can spill out.
Who owns the property, letter B? Do we, do we?
A private.
Is it, it's a, a B?
We know, it's, it's a private.
Oh, a private person.
It'd be the home?
It's a, no, it's a commercial.
It's a commercial building.
Oh, okay.
I thi- I, I believe Corey said they own that piece and the piece that goes all the way out to State Street.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So it's a separate conversation outside of this.
Yeah, you would have to buy my.
We have to buy it. Now, is it, the Corio question, is it cheaper than building an underground parking lot? I mean, yes, that's what it's gonna come down to.
Yeah, if you look under, yeah.
I mean, I, I love the underground parking lot in downtown, and we, I think you can definitely have some great programming.
I wanna know the height, though, with being in a community of homes, if we go underground, how much higher is it going to be?
It doesn't have to push the building up at all.
Okay. Because once again, I'm thinking of the citizens and they're looking at this thing that's being built and.
It's still going to be large compared to the homes in the community.
Right.
And we'll be rather close to some of those home properties, right? You're probably looking at, um, you know, thirty-five foot tall building, the, the two-story with, with a, a larger, probably a larger floor-to-floor on the first floor because of some of those larger community space.
Okay.
So here are the costs, these costs do not include additional parking costs. Option one is a sixty point seven million, option two is a sixty-two point five million. Um, it, I'm sure you know the costs of this new building that we're in here, this seems like insanely more expensive, it's just where costs have come since you bid this building out, which is.
Now, we've got such a deal.
You were, you were extremely.
We were lucky.
Eighty of your timing.
Yeah.
Yep.
You did it right before.
Yeah, it's, it's really crazy.
When I first started.
I just think it's a good project because we're saving power and water, because we're combining both facilities, that's a plus, in my eyes.
Because the, the.
Yes.
The recommended space would probably be over eighty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
If you would have them as separate buildings, but like combining them, what you get it down to sixty-seven thousand square feet.
Yeah.
And if we take over the daycare, fire station on sixty-two hundred, that could possibly be parking?
It's, could be, it's a little far away, I mean, it's a big problem with the ninety-one open.
But support the increase in ballfield parking.
Yeah.
Exactly, and then they could block those ballplayers, you know?
And it slows down to the ballfield, the, the, it would be a waste point for ballfield parking.
And there is parking across the head start, the old library.
Yeah, that's the ninety-one.
Okay, so he is adding that little, okay.
That, that parking that's across the street is added in in that second.
Got it. So I have a question, I know that one of the negative aspects in option two was the lighting, like in terms of the placement, like in term, I was. Looking for. Uh, page thirty-two, so option two, building footprint, square shape, difficult to access, daylight. Can you kind of touch on that, like, would, I mean, would windows help, is it just the placement that it would be less?
The shape of the building is what we're talking about, either building could have windows to get daylight in. Um, when you have a more square shape. You have a larger distance in both directions, and so the daylight doesn't get in as far.
Okay.
On that second story, we can introduce things like solar tubes, which are like a skylight, but they, and, and you can get that daylight in. But on that set, on that first level, it becomes very difficult, if you have a narrower footprint, it might be a little bit of a longer building, but then you can get that daylight. It's a, it's a shorter distance from one side to the other, and you can get that daylight to get further into the building.
Or I'm thinking, for seniors, it's not the healthiest.
Right, so.
As well.
With, um, uh, there are studies that show that, uh, uh, natural light increases test scores, increases employee productivity.
Right.
Increase, and, and it has huge benefits for, you know, seniors and, and the activities that they're doing.
Right, if we're putting them on the bottom level.
Yep.
Yeah. That, I mean, I only ask because right now the senior center is great, it's beautifully lit, and it has the U shape, and it has, it's a little bit more narrow. Yeah, and it makes it easy for them, so that my question is now, is where would we place them in the interim if we were to build a rectangle building? Can we not build a rectangle building in option two?
So, w- w- we probably could. Um, let's go back. So, again, this was really a study to show the feasibility of it.
Right.
And that seemed to be the most ideal placement in order to not tear down part of the.
Right.
Senior Center, but, but you can see that if, if we were to take it um, down, you know, make it a little bit, you know, squish it this way, and then let it come down into where this existing senior center is. That you could change that shape, and it would fit on the site.
Okay.
Just fine and take care of that issue. Um, part of that issue is, you know, exactly where that building starts, that building is, um, compiled in a couple of different pieces. It is possible, depending on exactly how that layout worked, to, to tear down a portion of it and still let them be in it. Um, just wouldn't have all the space that they typically had.
Yeah.
So, it, it, it could be solvable, um.
But if we relocate them, where would we put them?
Uh, yeah, that's a problem. At the library.
I mean, I, I don't, I'm just looking and.
Yeah, and.
Do you have a list of the, the one I'm bully on, uh, the old fire station slash police station slash police storage, police something else, now it's power, I don't know what it is now. I mean, that.
I mean, it would be a long-term.
Well, not un- until they get done with their construction, I'm just looking for.
And it, that is a possibility of the kitchen, if we think that it would, in order to keep the meal program going, there would need to be a renovation cost to upgrade that kitchen.
So, the dark one that you're talking about?
The one in the.
And see, and I'm talking about the one I'm bully on.
Yeah, the, the, right, and I'm talking about the different one.
Okay.
The one that's on the same site, essentially.
Right, right.
Where the, the, the old library fire station.
Right.
I mean, either, either if it's that location or the one on, by the head start, you'd have to do some upgrades.
Yeah.
You'd have to still pay up to that.
That would increase the sixty million dollars, like.
Yeah.
That makes no sense to me.
Yeah.
Makes no sense, how would we pay for this?
Well, it's on time.
That's what I figured.
And how much do you have in your account by now? How much, you have about three million, right?
Yeah.
And then what about senior summer?
They have nothing.
Just Parks and Rec?
The Parks and Rec.
Kim used to say three and a half million, a lot of money, and then you talk about six now.
Three and a half million is the payment you said?
If we went through a geo bond.
Which goes away at the end of, and it goes through a vote, yeah.
And so it's an additional property tax for everybody, if we did it right now.
Yeah.
Talking, right now.
Ranging about.
It would be about a hundred and thirty-five dollars on our average home.
And that's for thirty years.
Uh, how many years? It's double what we're paying for this.
So what the residents decide, if they decide to support it, you're putting it back to them. And you're saying vote on this, and you choose, and you know going in what it's gonna cost you, so they're choosing to vote on the difference.
So, that, that's one way.
You mean inevitably, oh my gosh, okay.
Sales tax is the other way, and it would be about a hundred and thirty-six dollars, 'cause you're gonna have to raise property taxes to make the payments. Library definitely has to raise their property tax to make the payments, 'cause that's their only revenue. And so, it would basically double the library percentage.
She guys have had an increase.
And, and then for the general fund to pay.
Zero, zero, zero. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and then the general fund, they're all, our only option unless we cut back with someplace else to make the payment, would be a property tax increase, if you just call it. Do someone define that by twelve, so I know.
And, and the current library is insufficient for, if the current library is about half the size of what a library should be for the population that you currently have.
Yeah. So there, so here, I mean, for me, there's a lot of benefits in, in doing the pro- I mean, I've, I've been wanting to see a project fruition since I started. And I know you guys have too, since before, and I think, really, we owe it to our residents and we owe it to our seniors as well. I mean, that population is not gonna decrease.
No.
It's gonna increase, and we're in, we're gonna need a place for them to go, I mean, the boomers are coming, whether we want them to or not, they are coming and they need a space. And so, the boomers. I mean, we're here, but. You guys need a space, I mean, there's a, we need to really realistically think about transitional spaces. Apparently big, but it needs a lot of, I mean, it's, and we owe it to our residents.
If you look at this, it's, Jennifer did the math, it's like twelve dollars and twenty-five cents. So.
What, the geo bonds?
Like a hundred and, then everybody goes, oohs, but you have to break it down in a month for me. One thing you have to be aware of, of geo bonds, we start the process, the city cannot campaign for it. You have to find a group that will campaign for it. It has to be external from the city, we are not involved. Library has one.
The only reason why I, why I gas or whatever is because we just had a discussion right before this about power.
Yeah.
And the cost, price tag on that is probably going to be bond-level pricing as well. So, like, just wanna make sure we're keeping everything in mind.
Uh, the power thing will be power revenue bonds, they will be cheaper than this.
Okay.
Um, well, they won't be cheaper than geo, but they'll be, they, they're a reasonable rate, they will get a good rating from S and P.
I just like to look at the whole picture, right, I just wanna make sure we have every fact before, so that's kind of why I was like, wow, okay, but it, it is what it is, I mean, I didn't realize we're half the size we need to be. And that's current population, that's not looking into the future.
Right.
And so, will this build for the future? Uh, yes, um, it, it builds out into the future, we don't see like a, a giant increase in. Well, yeah, we can't be a hundred thousand-person city around, so we're in big trouble. Yeah. So it, 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 it'll, it'll last out, you know, in, at, at least ten to fifteen, if not longer, depending on kind of your. Hopefully thirty years. But, yeah.
But you need a place to go before then.
Oh, I'm good. I'll be on a cruise ship just going around.
The other thing with funding is a lot of, lot of, um, libraries and these types of facilities have always depended upon, you know, uh, kind of the council bond or the geo bond. Um, but a lot of them today are also having to go and look for philanthropic funds. Um, and, you know, there are foundations like, like the Echols and different ones, and there are consultants who can come in and say, within your community and within the greater community, um, of, of, um. You know, the Salt Lake Valley, there are organizations that may, may look to, to help fund different things, and it's not gonna be, um, uh, like a huge chunk of the sixty million, but it could be millions. And it can, it can help, so, uh, groups like Pathway Associates, um, can come in and do those analysis, and. And then the other one is if you are doing a geo bond, going out and doing, uh, community engagement, now not just regular community engagement, but a strategic community engagement that engages the community about what this could be, and it doesn't mean ta- like, I wouldn't even, uh, take this study to him, you just start with what are your community needs? Within the parameters of these two organizations, and then you work with them over a series of months to build into something that they then become the owners of, right? They don't look at it as this is the library's library, this, they don't look at this as this is the city council's library, they look at this as, this is my library that I, and my senior recreation center that I don't give input on, right? And it, it builds support towards those types of things, you, you have to watch, uh, you know, make sure you're not crossing those lines of, uh, promoting it, right? But it's, it's different, it's about assessing the needs, and then it, it just, uh, naturally builds that support.
I like the statement on page fourteen, it says, "This approach not only saves on construction and maintenance cost, but also promotes sustainability by minimizing the library's environmental impact." I really like that statement. So, it's a good report, but my biggest thing is parking, because I have it.
Are there any other main things you wanna cover, 'cause we're at a time?
Nope, just parking.
Okay.
I'd like to say that I think it's a wonderful idea, I love it, I think, I think it's great, we'll figure out the parking if that, you know, that.
There's, there's some options.
Right, yeah.
Right?
My concern is still.
It's not gonna get any cheaper, though, right?
That's, that's my biggest concern, that's a lot of, a lot of, and people are gonna, and you have a library, and we have a senior center, so why do we need that? So, it takes some.
And the other thing we need to, we need to decide, because of, we're not on a, on a property.
You're not on your own property, the, the projected need of both the, the senior recreation center is much larger than what their current building is, and for the library, it's double, so tho- the, those are the things that, that you would want to let the public know if you were to go in that direction.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you. Uh, number four, discussion on a resolution of the Murray City Municipal Council giving notice to adjust specified portions of its wa- wastewater service boundaries it has in common with Mid Valley Improvement District, rest tackle up, present.
Ben's floor is coming up.
Is that what the construction is on Seventh West, is this?
No. No, that's on West and Waterline. Minzo. Yeah. Wasn't even ours, they just made a mess for narcissism. Yeah.
Let's call it eight minutes, eight to ten minutes.
It didn't make that long, you guys received the packet?
Yeah.
This is just a description of Mid Valley's boundary next month. Really simple, it's just, the process is gonna take a while, so, he put a slideshow to get, slideshow together just to show you the areas. So, what we have to do here is, is, they wanted, they came to us, they should've came probably to you guys for this, but they asked Ben to do it, and so, that's why we're here. And then, you know, I had to write up the resolution, so, um, so it's just a legal boundary, it was created nineteen forty-seven, and, uh, it hasn't been adjusted in that time. Honestly, this is only affecting two properties in the, which, um, the first one is Costco Sam's Club, which is right there, you can see their, their lines, and you can see our lines on the, on the north side. You guys are looking in the way, so, um, Sam's Club, they actually drained their sewage to, um, Mid Valley. So, now we have, so they are taxed based on that, so there's some, Ben can explain that a little more than me, so go ahead, so, so re- really, these two properties.
So so re- really, these two properties that are affecting. Stan's Club was always running into Mid Valley's Improvement District's system, um, they just didn't have it on their record that they went into there. So there there there's no, there's no change, taxation change with with that property. The property seven fifty-six uh, East Winchester, that does go into Murray's system, it always has, but they had it on their records that it went into their system. So there is a taxation change from Mid Valley's perspective, on that side, they're losing a little bit of revenue there. Um, so so basically what it's doing, it's clarifying these two properties and it's, they are clarifying their boundary within all. So Mid Valley's boundary uh affects Cottonwood Improvement, uh, Midvale itself and Mount Olympus as well. So they're they're cleaning up their boundary with this uh, with all these different. So what what's included in your packet is the legal description um with just these two properties. But we haven't updated legal description, what they have included dispels out all of Murray City's boundary along the whole. But basically their boundary doesn't go north of I T fifteen. And what what this uh resolution was stating, clarifying the language on these two. Two properties and stating that they don't go north of I T fifteen, so it's um.
You're kinda going back to nineteen forty-seven and cleaning up that one.
Exactly.
And bringing that here to twenty twenty-three.
Been looked at since then.
Hey.
Just getting anything updated. So so it is a lengthy process, so we're here today just to explain the process. But next week, a council meeting, we'll have to get a pass, a resolution for it to go out to public notice. There's seventy-six. Notice, notices have been sent out. Sixty-day public notice period, looking back at the seventh, for two final resolutions to be approved. Uh, want one to approve the the plat maps. And we want to approve the the boundary adjustment. So that that's the gist of it.
Right.
Um, what's what's included on here, we'll include that in the council packet, the the full legal description. Here's the resolution, um, that will be presented to be approved at next week's count or next month's council meeting.
Do you think there will be a problem with this, those that are going to get these notices in the mail? Do you think there'll be any kind of?
If 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 there is any questions, we're directing the contact public services. I'll answer any of those questions.
Okay.
Clarify the kind of what if it's going out, it clearly states in there, this does not affect uh your property, your service provider, here's.
Yeah, because you mentioned that.
Yeah.
Or Murray.
Murray.
Or Murray.
Murray's boundary.
Boundary at all.
And Midvale is okie dokie.
They have to do this also.
Yeah, so they're doing this with Cottonwood Improvement, with the Midvale itself, so every individual entity is passing a similar resolution.
Let's clean up nineteen forty-seven.
Well, that's.
Get it out.
That that's, that that really is the gist of it, what's included in here. They finally did send us the full legal description of the boundary. And then a new plat map showing.
Wonderful.
Does that, we need to submit for the October third, right? For the resolution to be approved. Does this just carry forward your documentation? But don't need to resubmit today by the end of five o'clock. No, this would be just what we talked about, um, as I understand, it's getting paid for.
I I can change the date.
Okay, yeah, just making sure.
Thank you.
Send it to you.
So we'll move on to the last item on our agenda, and so we have about, we'll have fifteen minutes after I'm finished here, but today I'll do this stuff. Now, I wanna be clear that there's two items in here that we're taking action on tonight.
One item.
And I have more than. One in two weeks, and then anything else, or no, those would all be in the two week thing. If we feel like after we start discussing this, we need to do another committee of the whole, we can have another committee of the whole where we discuss this. So I don't want us to feel pressured cuz we do have back-to-back meetings tonight quite significantly, so we have fifteen minutes. If we need more discussion, we can take more time at another committee of the whole, okay? With that, we are going to move on to the final item on our agenda. For the committee of the whole, which is the discussion on the applications for non-monetary and monetary nonprofit donations. Jennifer Kennedy presenting, and remind me, it's the non-monetary that go tonight.
Non-monetary is going.
Monetary will go into.
Since we wanted to put them into you, um, so we have three. Um, we've got. Let's see, the American Legion, they put in to have their park these ways for an Easter egg hunt, they wanna hold on March thirty-first of next year. Uh, the Haunted Woods have put in for park. Event is October twenty-third to twenty-fifth. And this last one is, uh, it's actually for the Power Days we have last week. It's so the power department. It's for their power bucks, their trees and their food that they donated actually to the senior center on the side this year. So we wanted to get that in front of you so that it was all legit. So do you guys have any questions on what these are and what you're working on tonight?
No, I have no problem with them.
Next one is the monetary donation. Now, if you remember during the budget process. We created an application process, we've sent it out to the groups that we knew the city was giving money to before. Um, we have received all those applications back, we have a total of seven applications we received back. Uh, per Utah Code, we were required to do a study, which we contracted with Bonneville Research. We reached out to three firms. Bonneville was the only one that got back to us, so we selected them. Um, I included in your packet, the study from Bonneville. Um, basically says that all of these donations could be warranted, the city would get the amount of donation in return. Via the services that these organizations provide, so now we just need to determine. What you guys wanna do, how you wanna move forward with those applications.
I have many questions.
Well, let's start with your many questions.
Hey, first, um, I don't know what page it's on, but could it be explained to me again? Whereas under section ten dash eight dash two, the Utah Code and the Utah Supreme Case of Price Development versus Orem City. Could we have an explanation on that again real quickly from? Thank you. And if I can't get all my questions answered, I want to table this, this is my pers- personal. Because I have so many questions.
Maybe we should.
And I would like. But I would like my questions to be out today, i- if they can't be answered, that's fine. Um, because I don't wanna rush through this, okay? So go ahead.
That case was the precursor to what ten eighty-two now says. Basically what it says was, in order to pay money to an entity. Um, you need to show that there's a net benefit to the city and just get it out. So they require a study. Show there is a net benefit for the city. What we're doing is. The statute doesn't, doesn't specify that it can only go to for-profit businesses. The statute leaves it open, and so in the past, we have been giving money to nonprofits in the budget process. And there was a discussion about making it more transparent during an outside the budget process, so ten eighty-two itself. Became what Price Development's Orem decision was, changed the decision a little bit. I think the one, in one, in one area of that case, they said, of course, that you had to justify annually the benefit to the city. The legislation said, over the life of the project, you have to justify it, so it's really ten eighty-two you're looking. Pecenter that was the price.
Okay, thank you. So my next one. Um, as a council, staying within the budget amount of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three was a hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred. If the council gives everyone what they want, it is going to total two hundred and seven thousand dollars. And that's a difference of fifty-three thousand, seven hundred. If the council does this, the council would have to open a budget hearing, correct?
Yeah.
Pay them all. Okay, I have a problem with that.
Wouldn't we have to do a budget opening yet?
No, we've already got that money set aside, correct Brenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have the whole from the same amount from last year in there? Okay.
So.
So it would be.
My question is, I don't know if I want to open up a budget hearing because. After raising power rates, property taxes, my own personal life, Dominion Gas going up. Gas at the gas station, food costs, the over, over. Living cost is going up, and also we just increased the travel policy amount. Um, we as a council, I think we need to have a base amount. Um, what amount are we going to work with to? If we decide as a council to give anybody of these nonprofit money. And um, if we have to open it up as a workshop, I'm okay with that. Or a larger committee of the whole, that's fine. But as a council, we all agreed that the council would look at this and. The question, should this be the last year we do this? In other words, we look at the, what they're asking for. We use the money that we have, that Brenda says that we have. Is this the last year that we do this as a council? Those are my questions.
Can I ask you a question just to make sure I understand?
Sure.
You mentioned on a budget opening.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure, the budget opening doesn't necessarily mean we raise taxes, the budget opening potentially would.
Would have to go into reserves.
Correct, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Which I have a problem with.
Okay, that's all, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
I mean, the timing, we, we should've, we had a budget opening last week that we went over and. Maybe the timing was off there, but we wanted to give ourselves times on this.
Right, and that's okay, it is a budget opening every three months.
Yeah.
We, I talked to her about that.
Yeah. And I'm sure, I'm sure we're gonna have another budget opening in three months, anyway, so. I think, and I'm not saying, I thi- I hear your concern, Pam, I definitely do, and um, yeah.
I don't want, I don't want.
Jennifer, what was your clarification?
I just wanna clarify one thing, the council did not raise their travel budget. I just wanted to make sure that um, we we didn't put any extra money in our travel budget this year. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified for the record.
Did we not go from thirty-five thousand to fifty-something?
We elected thirty-five thousand, that's your budget.
In the event that someone went to spend more, if we all spent this twenty-five hundred. Then we would be asking for a budget opening to increase to thirty-five. No, there was, there has been no increase to the budget.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. But still, I have a hard time opening up. That we need to have a set amount of money that we work with. To look at how much everyone is asking for.
I think it's gonna take a long.
Does anyone else have any input? I realize we're gonna, we're gonna carry this into the next.
Any input or any information you need from me for the next meeting?
Yeah.
I think, one, I I mean, I appreciate the applications that we have in our pocket, if we can get a list of everybody and the amount that they're asking for. Like just the snapshot, yeah, you have, you have it, okay, and then um. I, you know, and I'll just say this now, I think there are community needs that we have within our community. That we need to potentially really have co- a conversation about and them being some of the people in here. Which I'm glad we did do the study, um, there's some things as a city we can't provide, but financially, we can help and subsidize. In some areas.
But I'm very worried that if we keep doing this, other nonprofit people are going to keep coming into the city. Which, asking for money, and where do we say stop?
Yeah, and and I.
Because this isn't our money, this is the taxpayers' money.
Right.
And so where do we stop?
I totally agree. I I don't think it's a matter of whether we should stop or start. I think it's a matter of assessing what the need is in our own communities and and.
So is this good to be the last year?
I I would hope not, personally. Um, but I think we need to have, I don't think we should increase costs, I think we need to have a real conversation and evaluate what those costs are. And go from there, but it's.
Just to clarify, we only had one applicant that we have not had previously, correct?
Yeah, the Green House.
So that's the only new applicant, so I wanna make sure, so there's some that are asking for additional funds this year.
Yes.
They maybe didn't last year, so that might be another helpful piece as well as just.
Yeah.
In addition to what everyone's asking for, what we've previously given, I think would be helpful.
I've got this all prepared.
Perfect, and then um. You know, I, it's a tough year, right, because we're in a transitionary period, right, so thinking how we handle the transition. From when we were just openly adding it into our budget to now we're approving it, right?
Yes.
So it's a, it's a, it's an interesting position that we're in, I think, to think through and make sure that we're being cognizant of um.
And I think the Green House is a great opportunity for us, it's a, it's a need in our community that we've never really had, even as.
And we can discuss that at the next meeting, I think we need more time, that's why I think we should continue this.
Yeah.
So we'll push this till October third and then have the public hearing on October seventeenth, but that's actually gonna be just for the public hearing.
There would be, there was at seventeen, but they were planning to be here the third now. Let's plan that, I think, and if we get to the third, we'll move forward.
Also, in the report, under where um, it, the report. Back where the chamber reported, the gentleman that did that report said that they got sixty thousand, it was on page one of one. But I love the chamber, it said that they got um, sixty thousand dollars, and that is not correct. The chamber did not get that last year, so that's an error on the person that did the report. Um, so you might wanna check over that also, so.
We will, we will table this till our next committee of the whole meeting, as there are no other items. We are adjourned and we have RDA in like three minutes, but if you want to go two minutes, so we have five minutes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.